There isn't.
Okay. I'd like to call this regular town council. We good? All right, again, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. Uh, can I have a roll call?
So, Councilor Dinn, here. Councilor Dumay.
Here.
Councilor Higgins.
Here.
Councilor Mackin is excused.
Is excused.
Chairman Dorr.
Here.
Council McGowan, here. Council LaPelle.
Here.
All right, would everybody please stand, move your hats, and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, we had a correction on the January 25th minutes and additional order number 25, 2024. It's a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee.
Okay. Uh, seeking approval of the minutes for the January 25th, 2024 regular meeting. All right.
I'll also mention that we had a swap in presentations, uh, due to a hiccup in some email communication. So, uh, the library will be here on the 22nd and, uh, taking that spot tonight is, uh, Nick Sabatine with an update on our local brownfields program.
Okay. All right, again, I will ask for approval of the January 25th, 2024 meeting.
Take a motion to accept the January 25th regular council meeting minutes.
Let us have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council McGowan, any council discussion? Down to the public, back to the council, all those in favor? We can do it by hand today, it's unanimous. I see we have no unfinished business, so we'll move right into our special presentations. And our first presenter tonight is, uh, our superintendent of schools, uh, Shelley Lane, who will be here with the school's quarterly financial report, so, Madam Superintendent, it's yours.
On to Casey, she's our best manager. Not her yet. Let's fill. That's nice.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, all right, all right, um, thank you for inviting us, um, us as a pullback, um, share the great things that are happening at, okay. Granite Street and Sern, and I'd have to add to that, um, our recent thought, I have a lot happening, so I'm excited to share some of those things with you tonight, thank you. Um, so I wanted to start by telling you that our current enrollment in the whole system is 442, and that is, uh, let me see, six, eight more than it was in September, that we have 17 unorganized territory students, and that's two more than it was in October. And we have 26 students who are attending, and that's two less than it was in September. So, our enrollment is, um, well. Um, with that said, I'd like to, um, give you some highlights of, again, the awesome happening in school, and, um, you can ask questions along the way, or if I've sat with you before, you know, I can kind of like, and throw things at me at the end if you'd like to, and, um, Ms. Casey has some answers.
Yes.
All right, so I'd like to start out by, um, our karate teacher, I think I'd mentioned him before, but I'm hoping that you saw the recent, um, news article with, the recent news article, um, it really highlighted a lot of our students, and, um, a lot of our students got, um, a yellow belt, which is kind of, um, impressive for a, um, middle school, high school, um, situation. And we've actually had other school systems reach out to us, like, how are you doing this? And, you know, like, what are you, what are you calling credit, um, things like that, so it really brought some added interest, um, for us. We've started a couple new committees, um, one of them being a new communication committee, and we met for the first time on January 17th, and one thing that's exciting about that is the fact that we're getting more boys. So, we strategically invited people from all across the district, um, teachers, ed techs, um, food service, just people to come and talk to us about, what are you happening, what's happening in your department? What's, what do you see we need to focus on? And so, we had a, a great turnout for that, and they, they did wonderful, um, suggestions. We talked about putting positive information out there, we talked about, um, the fact that we do so many things that the public doesn't know anything about, so how can we improve on that? We have, um, the Granite, um, has a newsletter, I, I think I shared that with last time, so that happens. Um, you know, there's Facebook, but, you know, that, you know, Facebook, um, and so, we're talking about getting an app so that we can be intentional about putting, um, work that the students are doing, connecting it to real world learning, which is the way to go in order to age students, um, and wanting them to come to school and making that lesson strong, applicable to their lives, um, so we're actually meeting with a representative next Monday on having a Millinocket app. Um, so hopefully, that will, um, have great things happen for us, and I don't know if you've looked lately, but our, um, website is a little bit antiquated, it's not very friendly, it's very appealing, like, if we want to talk about attracting people to our school, to our area, um, even if they're looking at a business for buying a pocket, and they look at our website and, you know, it's deep. So, the app, the same company that does the app, for, um, two extra dollars, like, literally, like, thousand, will also, um, connect a website app, so that might be, that's, that's one of our really good things that we're, um, thinking of, and that all came out of the. We talked about, um, coming up with a tax-type service, and I'm not sure what this is exactly, but that can put out masked, short ones, like, um, like a pool schedule, or, I don't know, maybe a tournament game where they get to the states, something, like, just something that's short, but, um, something that we want everybody to know, so we have some people looking at things like that as well. Um, we had a Granite meeting, um, also a new, a new committee, um, that we put together that was for, uh, planning, we're calling it FY25 Planning Meeting, and again, very strategically had people cross the workforce over to the Granite School, and they came up with things that certainly marry the current principle myself, um, both being fairly new, didn't know what happened in the pocket, one of the first things right out of the gate was we really need assemblies. We're like, okay, tell us what assemblies look like, what were the functions of them, how did they operate? Um, and then we talked about team teaching, we talked about including, um, Sern's kiddos, maybe even offering some, um, uh, not credit, but, uh, volunteer hours, or things like that, to bring over some of the Sern's kids to help some of the kids that go in there. And we talked about technology needs, um, we got Taylor's, Title I, it was awarded a McKenzie grant for $18,000. Um, that, right, the grant awarded, and I, I'm hearing that that's like one of the times that the pocket has reset, that's a pretty exciting thing happening there, there's also a playground, um, we've worked with a design team on trying to make the playground more, um, like, reflect our natural, maybe a little less, less plastic. They even made out of, like, there's a lot of, like, balance work by walking on top of, things like that, so it's an entirely different, um, look to what might be, and that's a long process, but it has started. By the way, didn't tell me how long you wanted me to talk.
About this long.
I was gonna say, he always told me how much time I had, so just give me the cut.
Presentations usually go about 15 minutes.
Okay.
You've got plenty of time.
Okay, you just told me when you're done with me. All right, um, our technology committee, um, also, um, met recently, and in that, we kind of reassessed some of the work that we're, um, trying, one, a couple of big things is the fact that we really need to have an inventory, something that tells us what we have for all equipment, old and new, so that we then know how to dispose of it, repair it, replace it, have a cycle, um, so that was, that was a, an important piece. Um, another meeting that we had was, uh, to look at summer camps, so like, last year, a couple of our camps overlapped each other, so our Granite has a, a four-week program, but it overlapped innovation camp, so therefore, some kids couldn't get both, and it shortened up an opportunity, so this year, we met and we mapped out the summer so that we're including the vibrant program, the innovation camp, and we're gonna have a, um, summer international camp this year. As of this moment, we have 30 children coming, a summer English immersion, like, American class. Totally exciting, we haven't signed on the dotted list yet, but that's in our summer plan, so that may be something, um, that's something we're definitely looking for too. Um, so I, so I hope all of that shows you that we're really trying to be strategic with the voices and invitations that we invite to get a lot of additional people in, on what they think is, well, here in Millinocket at. Um. We have budget work underway, all departments have received their, um, their sheets, which they'll compare to what they did last year. They'll put on, um, on those sheets, they're thinking of what their needs are currently and, um, turn those into the office, so that work is all started, and our 279s, which I know you've heard us talk about before, the anticipated amounts have come out, so the short look at the anticipated amounts are that the, um, anticipated increase for local share is $14,984, so that's anticipated increase in local share. This year, each month, each month, we got $316,507. Next year, we're anticipating to get $329,136, beginning by first. So, a, a slight increase at local share and a, a not bad of an increase. Our, so, as I said, that's anticipated and probably have, um. Um, we haven't heard anything yet about insurance, and again, we talked about this at budget timeline. Um, we will budget for an insurance, but until they go to evaluate, which, what that is, yeah. I wanted to tell you just quickly about three, um, laws that are, um, currently being considered in the legislature. LD 15, uh, 28 is, the, the short version is the state of Maine at, yes, that we, um, um, under, and they're, they're believing that there's gonna be some things that the feds, feds are gonna say in March that they need different. So, the commissioner has held several open, for, looking for input to decide what type of proposals, GOE, main GOE, will put out ahead of the federal government saying these. The important piece there is it's quite likely we're gonna have four-year-olds served in public areas. The commissioner is proposing that one-third of the state of Maine elect to put four-year-olds in the program starting in the fall, and then another third the next fall, another third the next fall, until we have all of the four-year-olds served publicly. She's proposing it that way because some set up to do it right out of the, others are. Here in Millinocket, we haven't volunteered in the first third, but we probably would be, A, because we really care of a lot of our, right, have two very good, have classrooms, so, we haven't volunteered because of money that is not settled, so, feels a little premature for us to, but I just thought you should know that because that, probably, no matter what, hit us unord. Um, the next, the legislation is LD 1064, and that is to address, um, a shortage in attracting, um, public, all levels, and they're look, looking to change, um, the minimum salary into 50,000 incrementally over. It's looking like that's going to pass, um, but we haven't found a word on that, that's us, because that will affect our higher salary structure, that will be something that we'll have to. And the third piece of legislation, again, I'd just like to bring to your attention, is LD 974, and that's to establish a minimum pay for educational technicians, all other support staff, and that is thinking that that's going to start in the eye of, by first. Haven't given any final details on that yet, um, but that's something that also. Within if we're gonna have more time on.
My first meeting, so, the biggest update is that grants are on track. Been where I've been working hard to get our funds ordered reimbursed on a timely manner. I are on track with that, I'm actually ordering, um, 95,000 for Title I, uh, 7,600 for the SIG grant, another 97,000 for SR3, which is July of, here, next round, July, September. Good, revenue, absolutely coming, log regularly. Working hard, everything packed out. International monies come in, yep, we're international, 107,000 right now for international. Melmat grant, money for the Melmat grant. Cody just received, and roughly $8,000 for his, um, one of his pieces that he needs to have left, has come in, or is coming.
All right, so going on the same vein as, um, as the financial piece, um, I sent, um, the town manager a notice that every, that they're agreeing, as, when I mentioned it to him, it was 47,000, but if you didn't accept it, now we're at 50,000. And this is an, uh, literacy opportunity, which is intended to, um, really give a boost, like a booster arm for, um, literacy, and it starts now and it ends July, and then the money will all reimburse by September. Um, so that grant is currently being written, they're telling us through a 48-hour turnover, we turn in the grant within 48 hours. I approve it, and that will, that will be primarily 100% Granite school, and it is, and it works solely. It's funny that they don't ask me where they came up with, I don't know, but they offered it to, on schools all over the state of Maine, so that is something that's, um, working too. Long story short, Millinocket, my opinion, are on the, not stagnant, not steady, located, not in food service, we're getting grants, we're upgrading materials, um, we're, uh, changing the, um, the way we're serving, quality of, served more food this year by counting, last year, more meals were served this past summer than the service of thing. Um, our environment, um, the care, dedication, hiring, wannabe, bringing skill sets that, um, they're sharing with us. When we're hiring people, we're saying, what else, uh, you know, we're, we're living in a small community, people who have other skill sets. So, we're, in my opinion, on the, not sitting, reporting the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, just as an FYI, myself, the town manager, and Council Pelletier met with the superintendent and Rhonda today, and we had a very delightful meeting, which I think, uh, they were very candid about everything, and, uh, certainly, well, a lot of my concerns in that, the, about the school and the state of it, and the finances and everything else, and I agree that I think our school system is going to be a school system that is going to be proactive rather than reactive, and I think we've got a, a very fortunate to have some of the staff, some of the people in place, uh, I look at Rhonda because I know what you had is not an easy situation, but I have a great deal of, I had a very good feeling after our meeting that the right person, right place, right time, I think you are, and I appreciate, you know, everything we had today, and I thought it was a good meeting, and I, uh, I felt much better, and I'm sure Council Pelletier and the manager also will agree that we did. So now, since saying that, does anybody have any questions for the superintendent? Oh, this, I was gonna say, this is gonna be too easy a crowd, Council Dinnbay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you Rhonda and Dr. Wayne for coming and presenting tonight, appreciate it. My question to you is, um, how do you feel of the safety and security of the Millinocket school system is at large, in general, nothing, it's just, I'm not, it's not a pointed question to, kind of, get you, just, I know that there's, uh, been some articles out there in some places across Maine where there's been some situations where, um, safety and security of schools are in question, so I'd like to know for the publics, um, asking for the public, how, uh, how we sit, and right now, we're in, uh, contractual negotiations with, uh, Town of East Millinocket Police Services, but I would also like to know personally, uh, what kind of interaction do you have with the police department, um, that serves school system?
Okay, great question, um, we actually just had a meet, um, Tuesday night, um, so they invite us, me, to a very virtual, police department, had meetings there, um, I, I think they're great, we have a police presence at both schools practically every day. Uh, when, when traffic is coming to school, almost always, there's somebody sitting outside of our building, um, different police officers have, um, lunch with some of our kids, from what I'm un- understand, and I can't tell you, I know that changed, have two police officers assigned to, and so, we, them and our kids are becoming more familiar with them. Um, so what type of communications are frequent, an email is easy, a phone call, um, is easy, and they're in, really do somebody. Um, as far as safety and security, we're following this system called Love You Guys, um, you can look it up online, um, very vetted. We have our command posts, um, all of those things aligned with that program, Love You Guys. Um, that has been vetted by, um, all across the country, and in addition to that, um, Dexter School System, a lot was, a while ago, and they had action every, so I've had new conversations at superintendent, um, and I was delighted that we're headed in that exact direction, um, so I showed him my stuff, how his was there. Um, that will not be something that's public entirely or obvious, um, but I would say that we're in better shape than we were a year ago, not, but we're.
Go ahead. Thank you, I have one follow-up question, um, from speaking with the police department, I believe you guys, there's a live demonstration coming soon, am I correct?
Yes, yes, I'll go there. Yep, um, so, on, um, February 6th, Tuesday, there was a walkthrough, um, for all buildings, pocket, Edway, and both our buildings. And then on the 20th, which is the, uh, February vacation, um, we actually won't be in our building because that will be. There's actors that are coming, all kinds of things, there are people coming from as far south as Lincoln, as far north as Houston, um, St. Paul, um, State, Rangers, anybody who might be able to, us, had something in our whole tribe, yeah, and so, all of the membership practice. Um, Millinocket folks have been very, at all, I actually, that it's our town, our, that's, and the whole, they want to practice it, but they also want to, um, have a little bit of reality, and then just wonder like, what it's gonna look like, how will the session be, how long will, I think, all of those things, it's gonna side that in, I think.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Anybody else, Council Danforth.
Um, yeah, thank you. I have a follow-up question, since you're talking about law enforcement, I've actually had some community members' parents ask me, like, how do we get a school resource officer, so I'm wondering, your thoughts on that? If that's something that you are interested in, you know, what funding source, just general, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but just general thoughts, thank you, Dr. Lane.
No, I appreciate, that's a great question, the resource offices are kind of, um, mixed answers all across the country, right? I think that we, we don't have one, but what we do have in both buildings are retired. So, I have had conversations with both of them, saying, so, if something happens, we're helping, right? And, and, and their answer is yes, they have that skill set, they come to our school every day, they're both ed techs, you may not have even known that, um, but, but it's wonderful, because they're right there every day, no, they don't worry, don't stand at the front of the door, well, one of them doesn't worry, but he stands at the door every single day, and he, so we're extra things, and, no, it's not exactly a reason, but it's definitely, so, resource officer, I don't know, um, funding, evidence, like, I'd have to, and if I wanted me to, I could, that, but I guess at the, skill set, so willing, in our building.
All set. Any other questions from the council? From the public? Back to the council, well, certainly, thank you so much for coming and doing this, uh, it was great to see you this afternoon, it was better to see you this evening, again, uh, thank you both for coming here, and I look forward to these quarterly reports coming forward and seeing where we go.
Same names, Bobby.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
You what? Not noting it, all right, that moves us on to our second presentation, who we may or may not have, depending upon the conversation. I'll give you a second to get ready. Be good. All right, our second presentation tonight is, qualified environmental professional, Brownfield Program. We also have Aaron Martin with us and Ted Wolford from the EPA. DEP, okay. My apologies. And certainly here to talk about the Brownfield Program and that, so, Lord's yours.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay? Good. Uh, I'd like to start by just congratulating the town of Millinocket for having your first EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant, which is a wonderful thing. They're friends with Arketodden has, have utilized these funds for, I think they received their first grant specifically for the site, for the Great Northern Paper site back in 2020. And at the time, those were $350,000 grants. So this $500,000 grant that's come to Millinocket is significant. It's the same amount of money that the city of Portland would get if they submitted a grant or Bangor or anywhere else. So it's, uh, it's significant, and it's significant to Millinocket too, because there's no match required on the town's part. So congratulations on that and really happy that, really happy. So we're working, I went with CB Mahar Engineers out of Cumberland. Working in town, or I've personally been working in Millinocket for the past five years on behalf of Arketodden. But Peter and Amber are our contacts with the town. It's been a pleasure working both and getting the program up and running and off to a good start. Lorraine Byrne, US EPA assigns a project officer, they call it a project officer, project. Lorraine Byrne has been designated to Millinocket, she sits in Boston. And Ted has, is our main DEP contact. And what EPA typically does with these grants is the money is EPA funded, obviously, but they delegate a lot of the, the review locally. And so we have the, the great opportunity to work with Ted, who is a citizen of Millinocket, very familiar with essential sites. He's familiar with the work going on at the Great Northern Paper site. So we're very fortunate to have that kind of relationship. And, and Aaron, Aaron's the project manager, he's done a lot of work with me and the team in, in Millinocket since, since the start of Arketodden's programs. And one thing I want to note is that this is, assessment grants tend to be the first grant in for communities. And I'll talk about what those funds can be used for. But the point I want to make is that we want to see these programs sustain. We want to identify if there are issues and then EPA, and there's other funding opportunities throughout the state based on the Build Act and money coming from the federal government to actually clean properties up. So that's an important piece that I want to acknowledge tonight. And also, you know, the history of your town is so closely related to the history of the mill. And so I think there are going to be really good synergies between Arketodden's program, your program, that, that should benefit both, both entities. I'm happy with your question. These are definitions of, of what brownfields are, and you know, so they're not super fund sites, they're not sites that are in any other regulatory program. EPA estimates that there's over 450,000 brownfield sites in Maine, and we'll talk about what a site could be. But the real reason that the brownfields law came into being is that federal government and EPA wanted to try to prevent urban sprawl. And they wanted infrastructure reused and they wanted, you know, rather than developing a greenfield site and yield or consume agricultural space, that projects that have, you know, connections to municipal sewer and water get reused. And so there's huge potential of that in your town here. What do you think might be a brownfield site on this slide?
I would dare say almost all of them.
And why is that?
Uh, asbestos, dry cleaner was obviously fluids that were used.
Yep.
Again, could be asbestos in the, in the production.
Yep.
Tanks in the ground could be, and the last one is, I'm just, have no guess. But I feel that if it's four out of the five, I got a feeling that that one is due.
Chemicals from the dry cleaners.
Yep. No, you're right, you're absolutely right. And so the, the purpose of this slide and, and some of these, and some of these images are to show that, you know, oftentimes people think of a brownfield site as the mill site or the mill district in Lewiston or Bedford, you know, big hulking, you know, former industrial sites. And they can be, obviously, but they don't have to be. And so a corner gas station, the lower left picture is, is a picture of Water Street in Gardner, a church, dry cleaner site, obviously, the admin building here at, at Great Northern Paper. And, and the reasons that, as you said, is that, you know, they don't always have to be, you know, dry cleaner chemicals or solvents or petroleum. Oftentimes they're lead, they're asbestos, that are in every building in everywhere US. So, you know, everything on Penobscot Ave has potential to be in, in part of the program. And these funds can be used for, you know, if, if any of us were a developer and we were going to, to, to do a remodel on any of these buildings, you're required to do a, a survey for asbestos prior to that work or prior to demolition. These funds can be used at no cost to the development team to understand and quantify, you know, what their risk might be. And something that's, that's, you know, we do, well, I guess. But yes, you're right, every one of them. And I talked a little bit already, moving ahead, but the brownfields law and why, why it came, came to be, and that was to reuse sites. Some of the entities that take advantage of municipality, state, tribes. And these are the different, the, the various types of grants. So you have the community-wide assessment in the upper left-hand corner. As I mentioned, there, there's potential to receive cleanup funds if sites have been assessed and issues have been identified that need to be cleaned up. There are job training grants through US EPA that are focused on attempting to train people that would do work on brownfield sites. So the abatement professionals, as an example, they have job training grants for those. The response programs through EPA. EPA has targeted brownfields assessments, so the targeted assessment, which means that EPA can come in and do assessment on behalf of the town also. The town of East Millinocket has used a lot of targeted brownfields assessments over the years. Arketodden has used some targeted brownfields assessments to do renderings of what the site could look like. So they've got a group of, you know, landscape architects and architects that can provide services under EPA. And the beauty of those types of services is they don't, they don't get drawn down against your $500,000. So if you had a site, you know, just say Sterns as an example, that had a developer that was trying to vision what that could be, there's potential to get funds directly from EPA to help with that visioning and receive community input, build that out. And then there are RLFs, and RLF stands for revolving loan fund, and those are also cleanup grants. But the thing about the RLF is that the state of Maine receives RLF through the Department of Economic and Community Development, TD. So they have an RLF each year. You folks are a member to Eastern Maine Development Corporation, they have their own RLF. And so each year annually, you're, you have, much like Pete did, with the town submitted an annual grant for this assessment. Each year you can submit directly to EPA for cleanup funds, but these RLF funds aren't an annual, they're kind of a rolling basis. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar cleanup in, say, you know, now, January or February, you don't want to wait till October, November to submit a cleanup grant directly. There's potential for an RLF to clean, you know, to, to make money available to supplement a cleanup. Anything with that Ted or Aaron that I've left out? So now, you know, kicking off Millinocket's program, where are we and what are we doing? So to write the grant, we had to have an understanding of, to show the need for sites. So we talked in very general terms about what potentially could be a site. We are in the process right now of, of attempting to identify sites, and this is where the entire community comes into play. So no one knows the community better than, than you, and if you feel there are sites or you see a for sale sign on a property, it's, it's a good opportunity to come in and do some assessment, because if a bank is going to make a loan on a transaction, oftentimes they're required to do their own environmental due diligence, and this program can pay for them, so that a new user doesn't pay, pay for that. So we're identifying sites, we're prioritizing sites, and part of that is having a discussion with EPA for eligibility. Before we bring a site into the program, we run it by EPA, it's a couple-page document that says, you know, this is the site, this is the history, this is why we feel it's, it should be in the program, and EPA signs off on that. And then we conduct the environmental assessments that are the phase ones and phase twos that I'll talk about. And, you know, not only do we do, and let me, I just want to come back to the, uh, the reuse and, and the goals. But I'll talk about a phase one and, and phase two first. No, I won't. I guess I come back to that. Who created these damn sites? Oh, it was me. So we, we inventory sites, so that's what I was saying, you know, we identify sites that have, that, that meet the definition of a brownfield. So all those sites that we saw on that, that slide, the pictures of those sites, and then we, then we select them and we rank them. You know, sometimes, and, and this could happen in this program, that you have a lot of interest in the program and you have to prioritize sites. You have to, and you prioritize sites typically, or what I think, you know, one of the best ways of prioritizing is, what's the reuse? I mean, you don't want to assess just for the sake of assessing, you want to assess a site that has good potential to be redeveloped. And so if you're working with an owner or a prospective developer that has a plan, and they're gonna, you know, bring that site back and onto the tax rolls, that's what you really want to see. And EPA, I mean, this is obviously a, an environmental program, EPA wants to see sites cleaned up, obviously, but they also want to see jobs created and they want, it's almost as much an economic tool as it is a, as it is an environmental. So a phase one, these, these are kind of core portions of the, of the program. And a phase one and phase two environmental site assessments are, are part of that. The phase one is really trying to identify and develop the history of, of your site. So was it a gas station? Was it a church that might have had asbestos and lead-based paint? You know, did it have tanks on site? And so, you know, we do the, the research through the municipality, we look on websites like DEP's website to look at the underground tank storage history. We try to determine if, if there have ever been any spills on the site, and we do a site reconnaissance. So Aaron or some of his staff come out, look at the, the, the building, the site, look for floor drains and, you know, sumps and things like that to determine if there, if there were any issues associated or potential issues associated with the site. We either dismiss all that and say, no, it looks clean, it doesn't look like they're, you know, based on our understanding of the site history, doesn't look like there's anything required, any, any additional work required. Or we say, yeah, because of, you know, the tanks and the floor drains and the asbestos nine-by-nine tiles that we observed in the site, we think that there could be issues here, and then we do a phase two. And the phase two, we go out and we test all of those environmental media. We can test the, the soil, the groundwater, the surface water, sediment, hazardous building materials is often a component of that. Prior to doing that work, we write a, a work plan called, called a quality assurance project plan. And that lays out the work that's going to be done, the types of samples that are going to be collected, the laboratory testing that will be done on those samples. And Ted and his team review those quality assurance project plans, they make comments, and then we, we're free to go do the work. Oftentimes Ted and his team join us in the work and, and that often provides a cost savings to, to your program, because they've got equipment that they sometimes can bring to the site. So that's been great. And also, you get the benefit of being close to Bangor, which has a group of folks that are associated with the DEP program there that sometimes haven't seen these types of programs and have been part of one recently at. Remediation cleanup planning, so this is what I wanted to talk about earlier, but the phase one and phase two tells you if you have issues. But, you know, what do you do with that information if you're a developer? In this part of the program, we're able to actually put costs to what remediation or abatement could, could mean. And so we develop another acronym, a piece of the program, which is called an analysis of brownfields cleanup alternatives. And it's really a feasibility study. So if, if it was this building and we identified that the ceiling contained asbestos, we'd measure the, you know, and do a takeoff on the, on the potential volume of asbestos that could be contained. We'd utilize a series of spreadsheets to determine what the cost could be to abate that. If you had tanks underground, what the cost could be to remove those. And so at the end of the day, in this document, we create a series of spreadsheets that you as a developer can use to build into your pro forma and help you with your decision-making as to how you move forward with a project. And it really, it just really quantifies what prior to this work were likely unknowns. So that's a, that's a really helpful document to those teams. Oftentimes they don't read our thousand-page phase ones and phase twos, they just go to the, they just go to that document. The picture of a former wastewater treatment site on the east side of the Millinocket stream that was recently abated and demoed about a year ago on behalf of Arketodden. Ted, you want to talk about VRAP? Well, so the, you know, when you do a phase one, you receive federal liability protections. The state of Maine also has a program called the voluntary response action. And if you submit your project to the VRAP, they review your documentation, and if they agree with your findings, you receive ultimately a certificate of completion. And it's a very valuable document to, you know, an end user of the project, especially if they're redeveloping a, a site housing or, you know, it just, it just is, it shows. Right. Lives with the, with the property. The VRAP gives a project additional liability protections under the state of Maine. And it's, it's a great program, and oftentimes these sites proceed through the, through the VRAP. And Ted and his team view all that, that document. These are some of the benefits to owners and developers, and I've said this multiple times, I think, is that, you know, they help facilitate a property transfer. They may, they have the potential to make a property more marketable, because in the definition of a brownfields, it's, you know, a site that has the perception of being contaminated or contaminated. And oftentimes that perception prevents a property from being redeveloped. So it helps quantify those environmental risks. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, it creates goodwill in the community as, as sites are being redeveloped and helps, you know, build the vibrancy in a, in a community. These are some of the, some of the values to, to Millinocket, some of the other places where we've worked these projects. I talked a little bit about smart growth earlier on, attracting new investment, spurs economic development, and removes perceived environmental, environmental concern. That's all I had, and happy to answer any questions. I mean. I mean, I will say that we had our first meeting with EPA. We had a video meeting with Lorraine. I think that was last week, right? And she's very, she's ecstatic at how quickly this program has, has gotten off the ground. So, you know, funds became available in October. It often takes a grantee, you know, five, six, seven months to secure a qualified environmental professional and get the program off the ground. Peter and Amber did that immediately. And, you know, we've got some sites coming into the program. So I think Lorraine is, is very happy with the progress. And we're going to be talking with her on a monthly basis. We interact with Ted on a weekly basis. So from my perspective, in, in having had the opportunity to get multiple programs like this off the ground, Millinocket is, is moving and, and it's, it's great to see. So looking, looking forward to the successful program.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm glad that we're doing so well. So look forward to working with you all. Going forward.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to our third presentation. The chamber is here and that is our eclipse event. And I'm sure everybody is looking forward to hearing about this.
Thank you. I think it's been, I'm going to speak louder because I'm having a hard time hearing people in this room. I don't know if you are.
I just need your name.
I'm sorry. I just thought everybody knew. My name is Gail Fanjoy and I am the board president, not to be confused with the board president of the Katadon Chamber of Commerce. I was here about six months ago, giving you an update on the chamber and lots has happened since. But tonight, and I think I mentioned it at the time, we're going to have an eclipse. But tonight I'm going to just focus on the eclipse and give some messages. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council as well as citizens who might be watching. I think that we've got to, we've got to share this information widely and often. Just last month in January, the Katadon Chamber of Commerce got a grant from the Penobscot County Commissioners. And we applied for it in, in the fall and thought we would be well underway by January, but we are well underway now. Let's just put it that way. And, and the grant was really for a few things. One, to increase the general awareness about the eclipse and to consider the ramifications of a potential huge influx of people to our community, to our region. And then to support communities and businesses, organizations to address really the most basic needs of our visitors at the least and enhance the activities, their activities and experiences at best. So what have we been doing in the past month? We've been collecting background information on food and lodging. Lodging is nearly booked. So we know those people are coming, they're going to be here. We have engaged communities to identify unique opportunities as well as obstacles. The chamber's working with seven different communities. Millinocket is one of them and certainly the largest one in where we expect in our region, the largest congregation of visitors to be. We are suggesting implementation strategies to address any gaps. And of course, our main focus and reason for being is to market the region and all that will be offered during the, the weekend or the week of the eclipse as we're calling it. It's on April 8th, in case anybody needs a reminder. And, and we are in the path of totality. So it's a cool thing. I have described it often as perhaps it's going to be, you know, the hug that hurts a little too much and lasts a little too long. We hope, we hope it's not. So we're really concerned about what I would, what I've been calling three buckets of people. First and foremost, we're concerned about our residents, folks who are living here. What is our advice to them? And the first piece of advice is get groceries, fill prescriptions ahead of time because it's going to be difficult to move around this community, perhaps in the weekend, but certainly on Monday. So get, get, run your errands, fill your gas tank. We're expecting, the lowest number I've heard is 10,000 people. I've heard up to 40,000 people. A lot of that will be weather dependent. We don't have many gas stations here, folks, coming off the interstate from Medway to Millinocket. And so let's get our tanks full. If you own a parking lot, you might want to consider blocking it off. People are going to be parking everywhere. There aren't enough, enough places in our town to park in view the eclipse, given the numbers that we're, we're hearing. Or better yet, keep your parking lot open and charge for people to park there. Use that as an economic benefit to you. If you're a business, be open. Be open, be open for business. Saturday, Sunday and Monday, especially if you own a restaurant. We know that there are restaurants who are, that are closed for the season. We also know that there are restaurants that are typically not opened on Sundays and Mondays. I have a spreadsheet. It, it's scary. So returning to organizations, churches to try and fill in some of those gaps. Stock up and staff up. So give visitors a reason to come into your business and buy things, purchase things. And, and finally, welcome visitors. We really know how to do that. We do that really well. We show our hospitality. We create signs. We have festive, a festiveness about us. And so it's going to be really important, I think, on April 8th, when a lot of things in our environment are rather ugly, it's going to be really important that the people make up for that difference. The second bucket of people are the people who are booked lodging, are booked, booked for lodging. Often it's going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday and through Monday. So those folks are going to be here for a few days. Food, food is our main concern for those people, as I've said. So we're offering advice to restaurants to simplify their menu. Do grab and go meals. Do what you do best and, and put it out on a buffet, do takeout, really try and reduce table service if you don't have the staff to meet the need because it's going to be rather, rather crazy. Groups, clubs and organizations, great opportunity for them to put on a breakfast, lunch, especially lunch. Most people staying in hotels will get a continental breakfast, but lunches, lunch is tough around here, as you all know. As well as dinner, especially on, on Sunday. And events, if your, your business or organization is putting on an event or hosting an activity, let the chamber know so we can promote it. And events are coming in fast and furious. It's really kind of fun to watch, you know, Facebook or you just read something about Wabanaki, all the wellness and what's going to be happening at their place. So we also want people to know, where can I go and spend time? I'm in, I'm staying in a bed and breakfast or I'm staying in a hotel. And will the museum be open and the library and the snowmobile museum? Boreal Theater has a plan. Can your business host a vendor or crafter? If you don't have a typical business that's selling something along those lines, but consider ways to bring people through your door. Now, for example, the Katadon Federal Credit Union is selling eclipse glasses and KG is selling t-shirts and the Katadon Chamber of Commerce will have eclipse merchandise at the visitor center for folks. Our third bucket of folks are the day trippers. And we have, we don't have advice for them. We don't, we don't have, we have mostly fears around that. And our fears are around traffic, obviously, mainly. People will begin arriving early in the day and they will continue arriving throughout the day. Parking is, is a big concern of ours. We are encouraging people to park in what the state of Maine eclipse organizers are calling Star Parks. And these are places where people can park on tar. It has the availability of food as well as restrooms. But there aren't enough places, as I said, for everybody to park. So it's going to be interesting, to say the least. We have a concern about lighting. One of the major reasons eclipse watchers go to the woods to view the eclipse is to get away from the ambient lighting in a community. And so we would ask if you have a business that has lights that come on automatically at dusk? Because we don't know what the weather's going to be like. It could be snowy, it could be raining, but it's going to be dark. We do know that. So people do ask me, do you know what the weather's going to be like? I say it's going to be dark. And as well as the town turning off those streetlights. And I understand it's a fairly simple phone call to Versant to turn off streetlights so that they don't come on, you know, in the middle of the day. And then obviously a major concern around emergency response services. We had a great meeting yesterday that the chief Cody organized. You know, roads are, are going to be clogged. The soft shoulders on dirt roads are going to be soft. Likely people are going to be stuck. People will be parking in non-parking areas and pedestrians will be all over the place and at risk. And it may take extra time to respond to emergencies for sure. And our concerns are largely around people's safety and the protection of personal property. So keep that in mind, whatever we have planned as a community or as an organization or a business. So on that cheery note, the town of Millinocket will inevitably experience increased expenses for public safety or, or police, fire EMS, public works, think trash, signage, barricades, porta potties, traffic control and notifying citizens of what to expect. So it will be the best of times in terms of economic opportunity. Hope it won't be the worst of times in terms of visitor experience. But whatever the case, we need to get ready to look out. Be happy to answer any questions that I
Any question? For Gail? I got a couple. What? I'm getting a lot of questions from people asking, what is going to be going on in Millinocket the day of the eclipse? And so far, nothing has been posted, nothing has gotten out of there. Communities from Holton down and other places are putting out banners, agendas, whatever. Where are we in this, in this planning of, of things for these people to do until such time as the sky goes dark?
We are, we, as in the town of Millinocket, I'm looking at Peter because I'm not the right, I'm not the right person to ask. I'm waiting, I'm waiting to see. I know that there are going to be some meals. I think that the Elks is having a meal, they're having a band. I don't know if that's, if that's Sunday, Saturday, Sunday or Monday. We hope that there is a Star Park, if you will, or something festive happening in Veterans Memorial Park. We know that that's a great place for food trucks. It's a great place for food because of electricity. You know, porta potties. Arketan hopes to be, has committed to being a Star Park, the former ENR parking lot. There will be porta potties there, but no food. So food will be nearby and the nearby will most likely be Veterans Memorial Park. Five Lakes Lodge is a Star Park. Hopefully Northern Timber Cruisers, different places around town. So we are in deep conversations with lots of people in lots of different communities. Amazing, huge things going on at Katadon resorts. All days, all of their venues, food, music and events and activities. But in terms of right in town, I think that's still forming and being developed.
Like our, our, Mr. Chairman, our concerns from the town of Millinocket, the administration has not been about good times and activities. It's been about the lack of infrastructure and resources we have to handle this many people. It's been more, our, our energy has been put more so into making sure we have a plan for additional emergency staffing and strategically locating different ambulance and fire truck apparatus throughout the town so that they'd be more easily approachable. I feel that big events and activities are more irresponsible than they are a good time. And with this type of crowd, I think it's just far too congested to try to pull that off. However, I can tell you that, you know, the outreach broadband group in partnership with a couple of other organizations and some, some, some aiding in the process and assisting coming in from, from our Amber and Tom on our staff from the events group are kind of helping them through the process. However, it's not leading the, the pack on, on that. So there will be an event in the downtown with, with Frank Mansell will be there with FSM Enterprises. He'll be doing his DJ thing all day and there'll be, there will be food and vendors in the park. It's not a town of Millinocket event. Town of Millinocket will not be hosting any sort of additional events during this. And I do know that, you know, as, as Gail had mentioned, the chamber is working on gathering all of these bits of information as they come in over, you know, recent days. And then I believe over the next two weeks before it's expected to be published or so.
Yeah, we're starting to, to just seep out a little information as we go along. We just created a logo for eclipse and for the chamber. And we'll be, we'll be, you know, as soon as we can get, we don't want to put up the wrong information. Telling people where to go, where to park, where to view, what's going on. So we'd rather have a really good form idea before we put out.
And, and, you know, to add to that, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I plan to continue discussing needs of resources with the chamber and, and the event consultant that they, that they were able to get through the Penobscot County funding and, and present and ask to the council, hopefully on the 22nd for some additional funding to be made available for the likes of porta potties and mass mailings to our community and that sort of thing. On top of the grease and, and traffic and visitation, I'm concerned about people defecating in the street because there's going to be not enough toilets. You know, those are the things I'm worried about, not
That's what keeps me up at night.
Trying to get, you know, a band into a bar. I play in bands. I, I refused gigs in Lincoln, in Holton because I didn't think it was rational to try to travel to Holton in the middle of this traffic. The state police and the Department of Homeland Security are concerned about the traffic on, on the interstate more so than, than when fish used to play at limestone. You know, this, it's, it's a big deal. People are not going to be day tripping into Millinocket that day.
Yeah, it's, and that's exactly. Thank you, Peter. That's exactly our focus. It's on the basic needs. The event is the eclipse. The event speaks for itself. We just need to make sure, you know, and the, the chamber also has, has the, the chamber also has, has purchased a half page ad. The Bangor Daily News is coming out with a supplement on the Kataden region. And so the chamber has purchased a half place, half page ad and will write an article. And some of that will be, here's what you need to expect. Here's what you need to bring with you. You know, it's going to be cold probably. You need to bring warm clothing. It's April 8th. It's cold here in northern Maine and bring some food, bring, you know. We will caution people. It's about what to expect, hopefully.
Counsel Dumeiny, Counsel Phil here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for presenting. It sounds like a blessing and a curse all at the same time.
It is.
Really, I really do not envy you, Chief. Especially to try to do this in the pitch black and shut off the lights. I don't know. I don't know. I'm trying to wrap my head around all that. It just seems like a recipe for disaster.
It's three minutes, Jesse.
Three minutes?
It's three minutes.
That's the full of it, right?
That's the full of it. And then the sun's going to peek right out again and get brighter and brighter and brighter. That's our hope.
No, I don't, I certainly don't want to discourage anybody. It's, it safety seems like it would be a nightmare at this point to try to navigate logistically all of that. So economically, yeah, it's going to be great. Over overwhelming, I think, is the word that I would use for the the town. But yeah. Oh.
A hard, long hug.
I was, I was there for, I was in Holton for the, for the fish. And I remember seeing the steady, no, I was working at the pizza at a time. It's right there on the corner and you just seen for about three days straight coming off the interstate. It was amazing, if not overwhelming. So, so like I said, Chief, I don't envy you. Good luck.
I mean, you know, and it, it's, it's really a cautionary tale, I think, for our region because Holton has done, they've been three years at it. There is a pile of money. They're still having the same concerns. They're, they're kind of where we are right now. I'm not kidding. I mean, they they're, because they don't have lodging and so they've, they've got more challenges in some ways than, than our, than our town has. And, and the chambers beginning phone calls. I booked lodging in Millinocket because I was going to Holton for the eclipse, but you know, guess, guess what? I'm just gonna stick around. I'm gonna stay. Because you know, they were going to be watching the eclipse on I-95 somewhere, right? So a lot of people are going to be pulling off the interstate. Going, you know, I thought I was going to Holton. I guess I'm going to Medway East, Millinocket or Millinocket.
Counsel Phil here.
I'm just wondering how the school properties are fitting into this mix.
So we learned yesterday that a topic for discussion at the next school board meeting. Sorry, I'm, I was halfway through chewing a mint.
You want me to take this one, Peter, or no? You got it?
No, I got it. The, the topic of discussion at the next school board meeting will be whether or not to close the school for the entire day and to do a virtual day. The current plan in place right now is that they do a half day of regular in-school service. That's really not advised by anybody.
Nope.
So what, what Dr. Lane had explained to us in that meeting yesterday was that the intention is to present that to the school board for the opportunity to switch to virtual and then to kind of open the parking lot to folks to, to park and, and hang out and.
Right, well.
There's one. I don't know if you've ever been to a, a three-day festival, but I have. Halfway through the second day, you don't want to be-
You don't want to be there. Yeah, Louie, when we heard that yesterday, I, you know, I, I have to say, to me, that was a half loaf. It was good that kids were not going to be stuck on buses, that they weren't going to be kids walking home from school. I mean, the thought that people are going to parachute in here at two o'clock in the afternoon to watch the eclipse is, is ridiculous. No, they're going to start arriving very early in the morning. And they're gonna, it's gonna be a steady flow. So where are they gonna go? And, you know, we've been in, in conversation. The chamber has been in conversation with some members of the administration about Sterns High School being a Star Park. Which means people will be charged for parking. There will be food, vendors, hopefully, organizations and clubs, those kids that want to raise money, you need new uniforms, going on a trip. I mean, oh my gosh. You know, let's, let's do this thing. As well as facilities for restrooms, if they open their, their doors to that or porta potties or whatever. But with a full virtual day, I can't quite understand how kids are, are they going to be excused? So that they can do parking and vending and all those other things because they're, they were the parkers for Arkataden too. So anyway, we've got some, some wrinkles to iron out and we need better information. So hopefully there's some school board members watching. We'll tune in to, to see that there's a lot under consideration here for the kids. I know education comes first, but you know, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. So.
Any other, oh, Council McGowan.
I just wanted to say that my understanding it's going to be a half virtual day.
That better, but that's still eleven something.
Right, but the, the yeah, that's all I'm gonna say. She was, they're, they're still discussing that. People didn't want to add it to the end of the calendar.
Right.
So I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but I do know if it is a virtual day, it will be a half day.
Well, and you know, and the, the other thing that could happen just creatively is to say, you know, come to class virtually, but if, you know, you've got this other community service to do too. So it could be the best of both worlds, I think, too. But again, we, we do need to discuss that further.
Counsel Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Gail, for coming. You've really painted a vivid picture of what's to come, right? You haven't left us in the dark. Thank you.
Yes, well, no pun intended, Jane.
Yeah, and I appreciated your comment and saying the event is the eclipse because I've heard that in the community too, like, oh, what's going on in Millinocket? Nothing's happening. Nobody's planning anything. And that's been really frustrating. And I know I had talked to the manager and I understand and totally support the stance that the municipality is taking on this and trying to keep people safe and the community safe. So appreciate all the information.
It's going to be zooey no matter what.
Yeah, and so now we need to figure out a way for locals to figure out like how to enjoy it. Like you say, there's opportunities to earn money and fundraise, but other people that are in their homes, how to make it special.
Right.
And to be able to enjoy it and educational in a moment, three minutes in time here. So like, figure out what that messaging can be for the you folks that are going to stay at home, enjoy it with your families.
Yes, exactly. And, and again, what, what I haven't mentioned is people's safety there in terms of their eyewear and you know, people should really get their hands on eclipse glasses. The chamber has 2,000 pair. We're getting another 5,000 pair. Those will be distributed on a priority basis, going to Star Parks first, people in Star Parks first. But we don't think there's enough. I mean, it will make a difference, but there are, there are businesses selling eclipse glasses and that's a, that's a great thing. So again, this is an opportunity to make money. Is selling.
Is going to do that as a fundraiser.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Anybody else have any question?
The sky's the limit.
Seeing none going down to the-
That's my fun.
Going down to the public? Any questions? Back to the council, Gail. Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're very welcome.
Very informative and I appreciate it.
I, I'd love to be, come back in on April 9th. Will you note it? The, the chamber has some other things coming up, like a, our, a business summit, an annual meeting is very exciting. And so I hope to share that information with you next.
Thank you again.
April 9th after. Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. Counsel McGowan, can I please get you to read order 21 dash 2024?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number 21 dash 2024. Providing for execution of the town warrant for February 8th, 2024. It is ordered that the town warrant for February 8th, 2024 in the amount of $142,276.90 is hereby approved.
Motion made by Counsel McGowan, second by Counselor Danforth. Any counsel discussion? From the public? Back to the council. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Gail.
Hi.
Hi. Sorry, Gail.
Well, that's okay. I have a poltergeist in this house tonight.
Can you just ask her to? Yeah, Gail, I gotta have the, your video on too as well, if I could.
It won't come on.
It won't come on?
No, I've done everything and I have gone out and come back in again and it's, this is the best I can do.
Alrighty. Alright, how about heavy hitters, Counsel McGowan on this before we go to the vote?
Sure. Yeah, we have a few. $9,785.87 to Hoyle Tanner and Associates. That's on the reconstruct of the airport runway. $19,129.15 to Northern Timber Cruisers. That's the pass through for the ATV grant. $16,064.34 to Dead River. That's for diesel. $31,250 to Millinocket Memorial Library. That's our quarterly payment. $8,176.28 to Municipal Waste Solutions. That's for waste disposal. $13,078 to Pine State Electric. That's for the LED lights in the municipal building. $8,905.20 to Radio Communications Management. That's for portable radios for the fire station. I think that was it.
Thank you. Again, any public, any council comment on the, the order? To the public? Back to the council. We're going to have to do this by hand. So, yeah. So Counsel Higgins, how do you vote?
Well, we don't have to, because she can't vote.
Oh, that's true. She can't vote. That's true because she has, we can't facial recognition. So we'll do this simply by hand and all those in favor? It's six zero one. All right. Counsel McGowan, can I please have you read order 22 dash 2024?
Order number 22 dash 2024, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for February 8th, 2024. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for February 8th, 2024 in the amount of $6,684.30 is hereby approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Counsel McGowan, second by Counselor Danforth. Any heavy hitters in this one?
Just one, $2,620.02 to Pierce Atwood for Atwood for legal fees.
Any counsel discussion on the order? Down to the public? Seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Six zero one. Six zero. Alright. Yes, sir. All right. Counselor Danforth, can I please have you read order 23 dash 2014?
I will read order number 23 dash 2024.
That's it. I still want to have some 2023.
Well, you said 2014. I'll bring you into today. So providing for approval, the application for reappointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the reappointment of Stephanie Jameson to the Recreation Advisory Commission for a three-year term to expire January 2027. Note, Stephanie's application received on 1/30/2024 is the only application on file. If approved, the board will have one remaining seat available for full content.
Motion made by Counsel Danforth, second by Counsel Palateer. Any counsel discussion?
I will just say thank you to Stephanie.
Yes, I, I second that. Thank you, Stephanie. I always say that these boards need people and the ones that step up and volunteer do a great service for the community. Any comment from the public? Back to the council. All those in favor? Six zero. Counsel Demay, would you please read order 24 dash 2024?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number 24 dash 2024, providing for approval of expenditure from unassigned fund balance lighting upgrade. Whereas all work has been completed on the municipal building LED lighting upgrade project and whereas the initiation of the project predates the current municipal budget and whereas a rebate of $4,224 has already been received from Efficiency Main for the total project cost of $13,078. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the payment of the attached invoice of $13,078 from the unassigned fund balance.
Looking for a check.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Demay, second by Counsel McGowan. Any counsel discussion on the order? Counsel Palateer.
I'm just curious if the total cost is 1378 and we've received 4,224 towards it, why are we moving the total amount?
Because we have to pay the bill to the contractor who did the work.
Before we get to rebate.
We did receive the check for the rebate. So the contractor goes between the contractor and actually Amber stepped in and helped with that to wrap it up in the end. They did the closeout, but we have, still have to pay the bill.
So that the total project is a 13,000 plus 4,000?
No. The total cost of the work is $13,000. We pay the contractor $13,000. The town then gets a rebate for $4,000 to offset the cost. So that-
Where's, where's the rebate booked? Does it go back into this line or does it go into undesignated fund?
It goes back into our general fund.
Okay.
So this is the same type of project that, this was set up prior to me being hired. This is the same project that happened at the transfer site and the same project that happened at the Public Works Garage for the lighting.
The confusion is that if you get a line for a project on a budget and you get 4,000, they should be sitting there as a credit. And then the balance of the bill, you know, the total would be the total.
And, and had this project been budgeted in this current budget, that's exactly what it would look like. However, as I mentioned, this project was put into motion well over two years ago before I was hired and there, there's, there's there's no trace of a financial plan that attached to it. So that's why we're doing this outside of the budget.
So the 4,000 has been received, not in this current year budget?
We received the check for that, I think, on Monday.
Well, I'm so confused. That's okay.
Counsel Higgins.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I've got a question because so we've paid the contractor off the warrant already and they were transferring the money. Is that what this warrant is for? This order?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what it is.
I just.
Yeah, well, it's, it's the the check is in this warrant. You've approved this warrant earlier in the meeting. Yes, now this one, this order rectifies the, the balance in the budget.
Nope, I just wanted to clarify that.
Everything else up? Anybody else have any questions? Down to the public? Back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Counsel Higgins, can I please get you to read order number 25 dash 2024?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number 25 dash 2024. Any for approval of the recommendation by the Economic Development and Sustainability Committee, whereas the Economic Sustainability Committee was tasked with reviewing bids for the concept design of the Millinocket Community Center and to make a recommendation to the Millinocket Town Council as to what firm should be awarded the bid. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council award the bid for the concept design of the proposed Millinocket Community Center to Arcadia Design Works for a cost of $29,140. The committee recommends a yes vote. to Arcadia Design Works for a cost of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars. The committee recommends a yes vote. Note, listed below are the bidders for the proposed project cost. Haley Ward, seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Katie Design Works, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Sea Lander Architects, thirty-four thousand dollars. C W S Architects, twenty-three thousand fifty dollars through forty-eight thousand fifty dollars. Place mark, seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Thank you. Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council Demay. Uh, any council discussion on the order? Council Demay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification question. This is only on the approval of awarding the bidder. It's not for any
Nope.
Um, designation.
No.
Just making sure that the public understands.
This is for the design phase. Uh, there'll be public meetings, uh, public uh meetings for the town to discuss what the town may want as far as a community center, uh, locations, everything else that goes from that. This is simply to award uh the bid for the design concept phase of the project. Anybody else with any questions? Down to the public? Seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? It's six zero. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, warrant committee for the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting will be Councilor Pelletier and Councilor Danforth. All set? Okay, I got a hi, I got a thumbs up from Louis. Now, uh, Chair Committee reports, before we go into anything, uh, I would like to mention quickly that uh myself and the manager met today with Attorney Bow Payne uh for the Economic and Sustainability. Uh, he has the first draft of the short-term rental ordinance that was being discussed. And the manager, uh, uh, in that discussion, we found a couple of of omissions. But it should be ready to uh soon. And when it does, we will proceed with the process. But right now, we do have a first draft of that ordinance, which will be uh, which will be moved forward. After that, uh, anybody else with any Chair Committee reports? Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the um February age-friendly committee meeting um was canceled. We're not having a a meeting next week like we'd said. Instead, we're encouraging all our committee members and other folks to join us at the Katadon Snowdown on Sunday. Uh, yeah, the Sunday, um, not the Sunday, Sunday, the eighteenth um from one to three over in um our recreation complex. And we also still have a call out for volunteers. We still need some help with the event. So if anybody wants to, please. I know Amber put out an email and got some response and we still could use more, but hopefully uh the weather will prevail and we'll still have skating. Be able to utilize our skating rink and um there'll be cross-country um I'm gonna say lessons, opportunities, demonstrations over in in the track area. And we have, we know we have the sliding hill over there and some other games. Family fun, hot dogs. So come join, come join us. Family fun and the hot dogs, apparently, apparently, yeah. Yeah, and our manager will be down. Yeah, come on. So anyway, that's my update. Thank you.
The charter review community has yet to hear from the legal department.
Understandable. Anybody else with any any chair courts? Nope. Alright, so that moves us to our two-minute public comment. Uh, this is the time when anybody can go ahead and uh talk to the council about anything going on within the community or any concerns they may have. So is there anybody who wants to address the council? Seeing none. I would look to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Uh, any discussion on that motion? I hope not. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all very much.
It's not.